Yeah, definitely.
I will call the Sheboygan County Board of Commissioners Finance Business Meeting of March 11th, 2014 to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance this morning, and if you need an agenda, they're in the bracket near the wall. With that, I'd like the clerk to please call roll. Commissioner Solke, here. Commissioner Gauthier.
Here.
Commissioner Redmond.
Here.
Commissioner Guaya.
Here.
Commissioner Metalski.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace.
Here.
And Commissioner Allen, here. Okay, we do have a quorum. The meeting is in session. If everyone would please stand. Commissioner Wallace will lead us in invocation and pledge allegiance, but before that, I would like a moment of silence in remembrance and in thoughts of Commissioner Wallace's wife, Mary, who passed away last week.
So let us pray. Heavenly Father, guide us today as we discuss the affairs of the citizens of Sheboygan County. Help us to make wise decisions on their behalf for the good of all. This we pray in your most holy name. Amen?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us down to today's agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to today's agenda? Or is there any item any board member wishes to remove from consent agenda and move to the regular agenda? Commissioner Metalski.
Five-day monthly finance claims.
Okay.
G3, community mental health minutes, G4 NEMSC minutes, and G11, the city minutes from February 11th, 2014.
Anyone else wishing to remove anything from consent? Okay, for the regular agenda, we will amend it to add under new business, D, monthly finance claims, E, NEMSC North Country, community mental health, meeting minutes of January 16th. We'll put all those minutes under there, under E. And the NEMSC meeting minutes of February 7th, 2014, and then the Sheboygan City Council minutes of February 11th, 2014. Is that, is that it, Commissioner?
It's you.
Motion is in order. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Glad to approve today's agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Agenda approved as amended. Which brings us down to now the consent agenda, and a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Support that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Metalski and a second by Commissioner Redmond to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Solke?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauthier?
Yes.
Commissioner Redmond?
Yes.
Commissioner Guaya?
Yes.
Commissioner Metalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
And Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Consent agenda approved. That brings us down to brief citizens' comment. The Board of Commissioners welcomes public comment. We feel it is an important part of our decision-making process. We do have adopted rules of order, and that is, if you wish to speak, please, when you are called on, come up to the podium and state your name, and then we do have a three-minute limit. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board at this time?
Janet Vance.
Good morning, Janet.
Good morning. My name is Janet Vance. I'm from Tuscarora Township, and I noticed in the paper there was a little bit of a backlash from that Gun Initiative thing, and I wanted to read you something that I'm going to submit as a letter to the editor about what happened last time, just so you know. And I'd like to give Linda a copy of this to you.
Thank you.
And this is what I'd like to submit to the newspapers, both the Straight Line Resorder and Sheboygan Trip. While attending the February 25th Sheboygan County Commissioners' meeting, I became aware of a group named the Great Up North Marketing Initiative, otherwise known as the Gun Initiative. I learned that this group wants the county of Sheboygan, that's you folks, to pay them $50,000 per year for the next three years to advertise, promote, and to promote Sheboygan County. The board stated they were contacted by this group numerous times to meet with them in backroom discussions and to appoint a liaison to be the board's representative for this group. What is this group and who is involved? What exactly are they trying to promote? What is their experience? What are their goals? And are these goals vague promises without any accountability if they, if there are unsatisfactory results? What could this group do over and above what is already being done by private marketing groups? If they have indeed built a better mousetrap, so to speak, then why ask for government money? Is it because they cannot raise enough private capital to achieve their goals? I believe advertising is not a function of government, but should be a private business endeavor. There are several private organizations that already fill that function, such as local and state Chamber of Commerce, local and state tourism bureaus, hotel, restaurant, RV, campground, skeins, snowmobiling, et cetera associations. Backroom politics and good old boy policymaking is not what the people want or expect from our government. We should applaud our county commissioners when they refuse to be swayed or influenced by the drink and the dinner type of persuasion. Our commissioners demonstrated open, transparent, and responsible government when they rejected these types of offers. The county budget is already in the red, and our officials have to make hard choices. They're trying to prioritize our needs, and our needs do not include giving our hard-earned money to every nongovernmental organization that come before them with their hand out. Support our county commissioners on this decision. They made the right decision. And this is what I'm going to submit to the papers, and I just want to applaud you because this is gun control I can get behind. Thank you.
Better behind than ahead of them.
Exactly.
Thank you, Janet. I appreciate that, and I particularly appreciate it because I was the one who primarily got slammed for not having these meetings that are supposed to be so important. And I know the very beginning of the, of the open letter that went into the Tribune references, and so does the one that went to the chamber, references the project that was coming into this county that I wouldn't meet on and therefore didn't come in, and jobs were lost, and economic prosperity was threatened, and this is my file on that project. And this is 2009, so if I don't know anything, and I didn't make any decision, and I didn't meet, but I don't know anything, how can I make a decision? A little bit more interesting thing about this particular project, because I have, I didn't meet with them behind, you know, Sheriff Claremont and Judge Butts didn't have a vote on this, so it doesn't matter if they met, but it did to me. But I still know everything about it, and this is 2009, so that's how long I keep things. But it's interesting in that this was a proposal that came before the planning commission, and there was pressure to the planning commission, "Get this through, get this through, this is jobs, this is jobs." And we did what we always do. Legal counsel went through it, we worked on ordinances, worked on going through this. I was aware of everything, and it would have come to us for a vote. So imagine that if I met with that company, and I welcomed them to Sheboygan, and I told them everything was okay, and we welcome business with open arms, which we do, but had I met with them, it would have been a conflict of interest for me, that would have come back to me for a vote. And ironically, the name on this card that did the presentation and gave me the information is Holy Cross Foundation, Thomas G. O'Hare, foundation board member. So he doesn't say that in the letter, makes it look like I am not welcoming, that I don't meet with groups, and I don't, and he knew it, and I told him why. That was the first time that I was asked to meet. That is referenced in the letter, but missing much information. You know, Brian Graham has done training for our board members, and I would want the board members to remember, that's why you don't do that, because it is going to come before us for a vote, and it's a conflict. And ironically, this program didn't get forwarded because I didn't meet with them, and it didn't get forwarded because the board didn't work with them, nor the planning commission. It got forwarded because actually the project ended up to have an illegal catch in that it was moving children from group homes into a large community setting. And there was a state law segment that the planning commission found out about where these are not criminals, and they couldn't be moved a certain distance away from their parents, because if you move a child that's got issues from Grand Rapids or Detroit area, you move them up here, the parents can't visit them. So there was an issue with that, and that's why it stopped, but that doesn't say that anywhere. The second time that a meeting was arranged for me by Mr. O'Hare was regarding the streetscape in Tappanabiee, and this was quite a few years ago as well. And I got an email to meet with some, a group at, at the house to work on a tiger grant, to get money to straighten out that curve in Tappanabiee. Again, that's a conflict for me. And is that a proper expenditure of grant money or a match from the county? Because that's one township project. And think about the number of hundreds, hundreds of nonprofit organizations with a special project in this county, fantastic projects all over this county going on that aren't coming to us for money. And think of all the businesses that are coming into this entire county. And what if I met with every one of them? And what if I met with every group that's welcoming somebody here? It would be near impossible. There were other times where I was contacted, and I have, you know, the emails, and consistently, I don't do that. I don't think it's right. I stand by it. I thank you for thanking me for it, because I do believe that it's the right way to be. I don't believe in greasiness kids, and that is exactly what it is. And I think, I do think that this could be political posturing. I did hear that, you know, someone might be running for public offices soon, and I think that this is just continually a posturing, and I just would want to warn the board that, especially the newer ones, that, that is why we don't meet, because think about welcoming someone into this community, telling them this business is fantastic. Mayors can do that, village presidents can do that, county board chairs cannot, because eventually it's going to come back to you to vote on, and you're going to have a conflict. And that's just the plain, the legal part of it.
Well, we just appreciate the transparency and the truthfulness and the honesty, and I just want to let you know, I don't represent a group. I represent myself, but I do feel I represent other private citizens out there that feel the same way, and I just want to tell you that we have your back. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board?
I do.
Good morning, John.
Great morning. I was here on February 25th to present my annual report to the, to the board, and when I concluded, I'd asked the board if there were any comments or questions that you wanted to ask regarding my office, and there were a couple. And at the conclusion, I left the meeting because I had circuit court at 10:30 a.m., had several sentencings, and the next day, I pulled the DVD of the meeting, as I occasionally do, because I can't attend, because we have court on Tuesdays. And I guess I was pretty upset to find that shortly after I left the meeting, Commissioner Metalski had some pretty disparaging words to say about me. I got to be honest and say that my first thoughts were, "What a coward." But I've had some time to think about it, and I guess my, at this point in time, I'm simply going to say, I think it was extremely inappropriate.
What were the disparaging words?
I'll get to that, and I'll answer your, your comments. I guess it was especially concerning in light of the fact that this isn't the first time this has happened. It seems to be relatively commonplace, and especially considering at the last elected officials meeting we had, not only myself, but a couple other elected officials, and Judge Butts and Judge Pavich, all addressed the issue, and simply asked that if you have a concern with our office, any of our offices, that you come down and you talk to us. Or, in the event you have an issue and want to make it public, that's fine, but do it when we're here to address the issue, to respond, or to defend ourselves. Quite frankly, I think it makes the entire board look bad, makes the entire board look unprofessional. You know, there was some discussion about transparency and openness, and I guess I don't know that I'm going to necessarily agree with that when that takes place, when comments take place about a specific elected official, any employee in the county, or any citizen, for that matter, when they're not present to defend themselves, to respond to the issues. I'm not here to fight. I'm not here to provoke. I'm just simply here to say, I think it's unacceptable, and it's inappropriate, and I hope it doesn't continue. Now, to respond to the comments you made, first of all, you stated that after I left, I was, I was up here for approximately 25 minutes, and there were no questions or comments. I leave shortly thereafter. You're on the record stating that you've been attacked by many ladies, many citizens in the county regarding the fact that it's unfair that I make $30,000 more per year than the treasurer and the clerk. And I guess I'll respond to that, and the sheriff, for that matter, you mentioned the sheriff as well. Well, to become prosecuting attorney, you have to have a bachelor's degree, and then you have to head in law school, and you have to, you have a Juris Doctorate degree, and you have to pass the Michigan bar exam, and you have to pass a rigorous character and fitness examination, and you have to be licensed to practice law in good standing with the state of Michigan. To be a clerk, treasurer, county commissioner, sheriff, any other position in the county, there are not those qualifications, and therefore, that would explain the discrepancy in salaries. I think it's like comparing apples to oranges. The next thing you mentioned was the fact that you believed it to be a gender equity, inequity. I'm male, they're female, it's unfair. Regarding, and I have the disc if you want to, I mean, we can, we can put it in, but I watched it several times. Regarding that, I want to say this. There's only, to the best of my knowledge, one other individual in this building who has a, a female that has a law degree and similar qualifications to me, and that would be Judge Barton. Judge Barton makes $139,000 a year. I make 92. So there's a big discrepancy there. My predecessor was a two-term prosecutor, Mickey Castine, and I can pull the records for you on this as well. Ms. Castine made $95,000 a year. I make 92. Additionally, Ms. Castine had a $4,000 allocation for on-call pay. I have zero. Additionally, Ms. Castine had the use and benefit of a County Car 365, or excuse me, 24/7 365 with County gas. I have zero. And so the next time, and you said, "I can't even go out to dinner at night with my wife because so many people are harassing me." So the next time you're at dinner, and there's so many people that are harassing you regarding these issues, please feel free to tell them your current prosecutor, who's a male, makes substantially less than the female predecessor before him.
If I wasn't on the board, whether your predecessor was here, maybe had I been on the board, she wouldn't have made so much money.
I understand.
I, I, you know, I understand your frustration, Darrell. I do remember what was said, remember the context saying.
Right.
But I don't think that it's appropriate for you to be getting into an argument. Commissioner Metalski?
I'm just making public comment.
Procedural question.
Yes, three minutes. You know, it's a public comment, but how, how long is it going to take here?
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Procedural question.
Yes.
Is it, I mean, I'm new here, and I don't understand totally the procedures. Is it appropriate for commissioners to make a response to public comments?
Yes.
I have a problem with that.
I think when it's a personal attack, I think it is appropriate.
Yeah, it's appropriate. We don't, yeah.
Can I join in too, then?
No. He's not talking about you.
Well, I, I'm asking the chairman if you don't mind.
I, I, I really don't wish to have a debate about personal issues, because I do think you've, you took, you, you took the contact, you took out of context what Commissioner Metalski said. I don't, in remembering it, I don't think that it meant it was an attack, it was an off-the-wall comment kind of thing, nothing to do personal. You took it that way, but I don't think it's here, I don't think this is the place to debate that.
That's fair.
If, you know, I, if.
And I'm not debating it, I'm just simply, I guess my request is simply this. I guess if, if individuals are going to be called out or discussed in public meetings on the record in the future, and we've addressed this before, this isn't the first time this has come to light, I think it, it's only fair and professional that it would be done when they're present. I guess if you're going to, you know, make some off-the-cuff sarcastic, whatever you want to call it, comments regarding any citizen, quite frankly, I mean, I think it just, it doesn't promote a positive working relationship, and, and I'm not here to, to fight. I'm just saying.
But you are making a comment now that is putting you in a, in a tussle between Commissioner Metalski, so I do believe in your.
At least he's here.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So he does have a right to answer you.
Absolutely.
And he can answer it quickly, and then we are done, because I really do think you need to.
Very good.
Take your tussle out.
Well.
But Commissioner Metalski does have a right now to answer you.
I have no problem with that, absolutely.
And on the record, I still think he makes too much money.
That's, and I'm not disputing the fact, it's not about my money. My issue is making comments when individuals aren't here. That's the issue I'm here for. I don't appreciate that, and I don't think any elected does. I don't think any citizen would.
Janet, I think you probably should stay till the end of the meeting if you're concerned that you're, somebody's going to comment about you.
Okay. And then finally, he mentioned the fact that, well, I guess the point has been made, but I guess as a board as a whole, you know, I don't know if it, allowing, promoting, whatever, individuals to be called out publicly when they're not here to, to defend themselves, I think reflects poorly on the whole board, and I hope, you know, in the future, that that type of, of activity will be eliminated. I, I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. Stephanie, do you have your end up first? And then Commissioner Allen, you had a comment back, I believe, in response to.
Yeah, I can, I can make it, please. Yeah, thank you, and I have a brief statement today, but first, I just want to say that I was in attendance at that meeting, and I kind of see how those comments could be taken out of context, but I do believe, in my personal opinion, what Commissioner Metalski was saying is, when he went into the community, people were relaying the message that there was gender inequality, because Mr. Viznow made more than Mrs. Tribon and Mrs. Cronin, and he didn't say he agreed with that or not, he was sharing that with the board, which is something I expect you guys to do if citizens come to you with comments about issues. I think that is appropriate. I don't agree with that. I don't think Commissioner Metalski does. I would rather be paid according to the duties of my job and how admirably or inadmirably I perform that job, rather than just because I'm a lady. So I don't think it was meant to be disparaging. I was there, I stayed the whole meeting. I got your back, Darrell. And, or sorry, Mr. Viznow. And, you know, you know, I, that's just my personal two cents on that. And then this morning, I just wanted to make a brief statement about what happened after the board decided not to fund Gun. And I stand by my statement, the county did the right thing in choosing not to fund them. They're unelected, they're unappointed, they're doing a job better done in the private sector, and they're spending taxpayer money that I do not believe the county has to give them. And then, since that whole thing transpired, I learned a couple of interesting things. There was an online poll conducted by the Tribune, and I happened upon it by reading the E edition, and I did vote, and the question was, "Did the county board make the right decision in not funding Gun?" And on the day I voted, which was one or two days after the meeting, 77 people had voted prior, and I voted, and I was 78. And the results indicated that 98% of the folks who took the poll said yes, and only 2% said no. And I know that sometimes different groups send around, like, "There's a poll coming, vote for this," and that, but I don't believe that happened here, because I'm probably the only one that would have done it in town, and I didn't do it, and I don't believe that that Gun had done it either. So I think it was a very honest representation of how people felt. And I'm not encouraging you to base your decisions on polls, rather your principles, but I do think it speaks to the fact that people want, you know, responsible use of our tax dollars, and are starting to view the actions of the same bunch of people under a host of different organizational names as having one goal, to obtain and spend as many tax dollars as possible in order to foster their own vision of the community. Number two, in his Seven Principles of Sound Public Policy, Lawrence Reed says, "No one spends someone else's money as carefully as he spends his own." And I think this is evident in the number of townships that you represent that refuse to support this initiative, and the fact that the city didn't give their own pot of money when presented with the proposal. To me, if city officials are so gung-ho on Gun, they should vote to spend the money they are in charge of to fund it, and face their voters afterwards. If they do so, I certainly do not want to hear about how there's no money for salt, the ice rink, the upper house repairs, or any of their other obligations. So that's just a little, hopefully that'll get in the paper, and they can tell the city that. Three, private people do support Gun in their efforts, and I think that's terrific, but they're not, they should not lobby for our tax dollars. When their chief source of funding is tax dollars, they aren't creating anything, merely robbing Peter to pay Paul. Jobs and wealth are created when people provide goods and services to other people that are willing to spend their own money to buy. Anything else, as Bastiat said, is legal plunder. Another principle of sound public policy reminds us, government has nothing to give us that it hasn't taken from someone else. And ultimately, a government big enough to give you everything you need is big enough to take everything you have. We aren't, we are borrowing and printing money at alarming rate nationally. We have made promises at all levels of government we cannot, not afford to keep, and we have stretched government into many areas it has no business being in in the first place. I fear for the day when the jig is up and we have to pay the piper. Declining to fund Gun makes you willing to stand for responsible use of limited taxpayer dollars in tough times. It also makes you defenders of open and transparent government, all of which make you deserving of my thanks for your strong stance. And I have to laugh, because I'm probably the only person that took more heat for that decision than you. It was, but I deserved it, because I, I said what I felt, so, but I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I, I have to say, I've heard from a lot of people, and that was, you know, I'm sure the intent of the letter was to contact me, which many people have, and I know, you know, how you, you feel, and I know that, you know, members of your group get beat up for speaking out as you have, but I'm hearing from a lot of people. And I'm not hearing that there was support for that group. I'm hearing that there's support for this board, because that did come to us prior. We, you know, we, you know, that's, we didn't act on it. It's back before us again, and people are aware of that, and, you know, and again, this, when you're in a public position, you're going to take heat. You're going to get criticism, you're going to get people that are going to say things you don't like, and that is part of this position. And not that you become thick-skinned, but you accept that you're going to hear things that people say that you don't like, and it's never again, I've been in, I have been in county township government for almost 30 years. I got elected, re-elected for 30 years, because I say what I think and stand by it, like you, and I, and I meant what I said. I don't think it was appropriate. But I think that this might not get the desired result of that letter, because people also don't like that. It's, and I'm not going to respond to it. Everyone's saying, "Well, you got to respond, you got to respond." No, I will not respond. I don't think it's necessary, so I'm glad that, I'm glad to hear, though, that people support our decision.
Yes, I'm Paula Plon. Don't I have Paula's Cafe? I just want to make a statement. First of all, I do applaud all of yous. The vote last time we were here, and everybody voted no, except for one, which I don't understand, but that's okay. I look at it this way. There's been so many people with their head in the sand and letting everybody else take over. This is why our tax dollars are going crazy. Well, I'm heavily getting involved big time now, because I'm getting tired of everybody picking stuff out of my pocket that I don't have, and going into debt to do what you should do. As far as this board, I'll tell you what, I appreciate you so much to talk to us and to speak as we're, for knowledge and let us know. You're also doing a teaching and helping us 100%. So I hope, no matter what anybody says, that you don't change, because you are a great board, and it's just too bad that I can't get the Tuscarora Board to come up here and take some lessons. I'll tell you that right now. And when it comes election time, if you don't get back in, you come down to Tuscarora, honey. I'll tell you what, you will not have to worry about getting in, and we will dearly love you. But the thing is, like I said, as far as this gentleman wanting, this Mr. O'Hare, wanting $50,000 a year out of our tax dollars for advertising, you know, there's people in business that can't even afford advertising, period. people in business that can't even afford advertising, period. Now, this man wants to take the lazy way and take into our money, our pockets, so he can do the advertising or this gun operation. So, if that's the case, then do fundraising, work for it. You know what, years ago, everybody worked for what they wanted, and that's the way that it should be now, instead of everybody just grabbing money where people don't have it. And nine times out of ten, it's the poor people that are really gonna lose on stuff like this. So, once again, I do applaud you, I appreciate you, I love coming up here to the meetings, and from now on, anything comes on that they're gonna be dipping in my pocket, I'm gonna be here fighting, because I'm getting tired of it. My pockets are empty, and they're still digging, there is not, and I know I'm not the only one. And the battle that we're fighting in township, the township there, okay, that's our life, we're fighting for our lives, and the board could care less, and that's sad, because I know here, you people think about the people, and that's so important. They don't, okay? They don't think about us, they don't think about the people, and especially our senior citizens, there's so many people out there that want to come to the meetings that can't, so guess what, we're gonna start speaking for them, because I will go door-to-door if I have to, and I will get their opinion and their signatures, and there's whatever it's gonna take, because it's sad what this is coming to, all these different projects, and it's all about money, and nobody has a voice. When did that start? People, it's people that should have voices that bring this on. But once again, I appreciate all of yous, thank you so much for the good job you're doing, and when you comment to the people, the board members, that's great, that's what it's supposed to be, you're open, you're honest, and that's where you get true honest people standing behind you, one hundred percent behind you, because you are honest, because they know if they're confronted with somebody that says, "Oh, well, she, she, she," this person can stand up and say, "Excuse me?" No, she doesn't believe that, I know, and they trust in your words, and you will get people to stand up behind you, and that's excellent. So, as far as all this back throwing, the stuff that's going on with this gun operation or this association, don't take none of it to heart, because I'll tell you what, you've done a great job, and thank you so much for not letting them dish into my pocket again, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? Rory?
Good morning to the commissioners, and everybody here. My name is Rory Reineke, and I live in Sheboygan County.
Rory, can you speak up a little bit, we're not, the mic's-
Sorry, I don't have a speaking voice.
Tap your speaker. Yeah, that's all right.
There we go. Now is it better? Maybe? Okay, okay, I'll try.
Oh, that's-
It's-
Better, just closer to the mic.
It would seem we have a bit of a cause for concern with regard to an advertising communications proposal for the county, I'm neither for or against. What I am concerned about is whether this proposal is constitutional within Michigan Act 157, or whether the fifty thousand dollar expenditure is legal. Having researched and read the entire act, I can tell you it's not. But even if it was, is this the proper time to ask the taxpayers for another large expenditure increase? And should this be a mission stated service of the Chamber of Commerce? I could be wrong, this is for your consideration. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Thank you very much.
Before the prosecutor rushes off, I would like to say, I hope the clerk and the treasurer understand that the prosecutor makes so much more money than you do, because he is much more highly educated than you are, he made that abundantly clear, and I would like to see that the prosecutor gets a copy of that, it's in our pad, the cost to the people of Sheboygan County, of every county official. I'd like that to go to the press as well.
And I would request that Commissioner Matowski and Darrell get together, the prosecutor get together and-
Can I make one, just very brief?
Yeah.
In the parking lot?
After the meeting, after the last meeting, I did contact Jeff about maybe just addressing the issues with Commissioner Matowski, and I was told that I couldn't meet with him. And so that, I guess I don't have any venue, I actually contacted Kathy about having another elected official's meeting to address it again, and I was told, "Well, you know, I don't know when, it's gonna be somewhere down the line, maybe in April," so that's why I'm here, because I have no other-
And I will address that, in that if you, as an elected official, have an issue that is a board issue-
Yes.
And the administrator was absolutely correct, and the proper venue is the board, if it's an office, if it is personnel, if it's office, if it's monetary, or whatever, that is the issue. If it's IT, if it's salary, if it's anything like that, you are, that is the proper protocol for all elected officials to go through the administrator. If you had a personal issue with Commissioner Matowski, you had every right to call him and, you know, talk about it, and if that, you know, I don't know-
Well, I did make an attempt, and Jeff actually came down to my office, and I was kinda told, "Well, it's not, wouldn't happen," but to some extent, or you dealt with a discussion, I said, "Well, I'd like to meet with him," and I don't remember what you said, but you kinda made it sound like, "Well, not really," so, anyway, that's why I'm here. And again, Commissioner Matowski, I'm not upset about the money, that's not the point, I just, I prefer, if you have an issue in the future, just come talk to me, I don't have a problem with that, I'd be happy to sit with you anytime.
Well, it wasn't an issue, okay, until you made an issue out of it.
What, like?
It was not an issue.
Okay, okay, that can be discussed between the two of you, because-
Absolutely, and again, I know, for the comments, and again, I'm not here, I just-
But again, board policy for all elected officials, if it's financial, if it's a personnel issue, that is to go to the administrator first, because anything that's coming out of your departments, is it legal, is it feasible, is it in line with union contracts, is it in line with, you know, the labor law?
Again, I-
Yeah, I wasn't finished, but you had, you were talking to someone else, so that's why I stopped. But anyway, that's the protocol for those kinds of issues, so, and the elected's meeting actually is called not for a gripe session to, you know, talk to the board about those kinds of issues, those need to come before the board. The reason that we started the elected officials' meetings were to, what's going on in your office that's gonna affect our county budget, it's gonna affect our finances, not that you, you can talk to any county commissioner that you want about an issue that you've got between them. If it's an issue that's affecting the entire board, it comes before the entire board.
I guess that's, I assume it affected the whole board, because it was done on the record during the commissioner meeting, so that's why-
Yeah, yeah, and that part, if that's your feeling, that's fine, but you still have some unresolved issues between the two of you, that-
And I'd be happy to talk to you, Tony, if you're available, if not, I understand too, so, maybe I'll give you a call. Eric?
Yeah.
Great.
Or parking lot, because-
We're in the parking, I'll be at the parking lot.
I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking.
So, anyway-
We're in a cage at the KFC hall.
There you go.
Oh, you guys could raise revenue! Fundraisers.
No hard feelings.
No, understand your frustration, you're only-
I'm frustrated, and I was here, and I felt like, "Well, gee, I haven't been thrown under the boss, I walk out," but, but-
Yeah, and if you were here, and you would've heard the context, and you would've, I think, taken it differently.
I would've, again, my issue was, I wasn't here, and I felt like, "Well, gee, I leave, and all of a sudden, it's been a connection," but, hey, no big deal.
Okay.
Well, he's just a kid, so we have to-
Okay, how about we're- Is there any other public comment on Commissioner Eller?
With regard to the great up north, I just wanted to make a comment, that some of the newspaper articles were indicating that we, the board of commissioners, were not truly aware of great up north, what it was about, what they hoped to do. And I for one want to state that back in October, at an MTA meeting, Tom O'Hare was at that meeting, he did a presentation that was probably an hour and fifteen minutes, maybe an hour and a half. I don't know, I think Tony Matowski could've been there, I'm not sure what other commissioners were there.
Commissioner Gwagmew.
But he did a full presentation, so with regard to the belief that we did not know what great up north was about, I for one did have a good grasp on it, and he had gone into a lot of detail explaining what the plan was.
And also, that plan actually came before us in 2012, with different people, same concept, not new, you know, the perception that this, no one knew about this on this board is, was wrong, and Commissioner Goethe, as well, saw the whole entire presentation at the city council meeting, so, four commissioners had already seen the hour and a half presentation the second time, so, again, misconception to think that we don't know, and again, anybody that knows me knows I have files on everything, and-
Sure enough.
This is a partial file on that. So, there's a misconception that if we don't talk to the person and get the information spoon-fed, that we don't know. There's a misconception that we only know if the administrator tells us, which is not true, but the administrator does follow, is to follow board policies and procedures, so, that's, you know, that's been misconstrued, too, so, a little bit of misinformation out there, but, anyway, public comment done, board member, board comment done? We are now into-
Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, Commissioner-
Just a last-minute comment regarding whether or not it's appropriate for us to support nonprofit organizations that serve a purpose that's consistent with our goals. I want to remind the board that we do support the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance, and that's a nonprofit organization.
We don't support them as a nonprofit, we are part of the organization, part of a legitimate legalized organization, that, it's not that we are just donating money to a nonprofit. This one, we are actually legally part of the organization. Do we need to be? No.
I just wanted to make that point.
But again, in being careful with that, is that there's hundreds out there, there's a hundred, a hundred and some, almost two hundred, just in Mackinac City alone, so-
Well, my point is that it's not necessarily inappropriate just because it's a nonprofit.
No, but the ones that we do have affiliations with are ones that we are a legal part of their organization papers.
I understand that, but-
Okay, scheduled visitors, we have none. Finance Director's report, Carrie.
Good morning. In your packets, you should've found on pages 161 through 165, the revenue expenditure report for the general fund, with comparable data for the prior year, so we'll start with the revenue side of things. We have year-to-date revenue of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, compared to last year, we had a hundred and sixty-six thousand, so revenue's down around eighteen thousand dollars, and that's mostly due to the current tax line, line 40100, and that's merely due to the timing of when the townships transfer to the treasurer, and then the treasurer transfers to the general fund. So, that, we always see fluctuation in that line, depending on when people turn stuff in. We are currently sitting at 1.3% of our revenue budget through the month of January, and last year at this time, we were at 1.6, so, very consistent, and only one major change. Any questions on any of the revenue lines in the budget, or in the report?
Questions, any questions?
Okay, then we'll switch over to the expenditure side of things, which is summarized on page 165 of your board packs. Monthly expenditures through January 31st, 2014 are totaling nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, compared to last year at this time, we were at seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, so expenses are up around a hundred and eighty thousand. They're up in actually several categories, there were eleven departments that fluctuated more than five thousand dollars through the first month, and the reason for that is that we had three pays in the month of January, and our first three pays in the year of 2013 wasn't until March, so you're gonna see this, like, jockeying of these departments' expenses, it'll remedy itself in March, and then we'll see the true increase in costs. There was two other lines other than payroll-related, actually, three other lines other than payroll-related. The first one is in Department 267, Major Equipment and Building, that expense is up around twenty-nine thousand dollars, and that's merely due to the timing of a gasoline purchase. We purchased it in January of 2014, and we did not purchase it until February of 2013, so that line will clear itself up next month. The Department 731, County MSU Extension Office, is actually showing a decrease of around thirty-seven thousand dollars, and that is due to the timing of when we paid the contractual services for the staffing that we have up at MSUE. We paid that in January of 2013, however, we didn't receive the bill until February of 2014. So, that should remedy itself next month, too. And then the final department that wasn't payroll-related is Department 902, and there was less of a transfer to the front-of-the-court fund. In previous years, we were trying to fund a deficit cash balance, but we realized that we really should be just trying to fund the deficit fund balance, because the state consistently has receivables that are due two and three months out, that do make the fund whole, it's just cash doesn't look that great, but rather than doing transfers in and out, we decided to not try to do that this year, we merely pay attention to a negative fund balance number. So, we did not do the big transfer to the front-of-the-court in January, and then we also did not do the transfer to the Social Services Board in January of 2011. We had originally given them a quarterly appropriation of four thousand dollars, and then I believe it was in February and March, we started talking about taking those activities back in-house and accounting for them through the county's finance department. So, we no longer appropriate unless an expenditure occurs.
Carrie, did we pay the dues bill on that? Because we allocated money for the dues.
Yes, we did.
I got a letter, I think it was kind of generic, I talked to Jeff, I don't know that he got one either.
Oh, okay. I can look into that, but yes, I do, I do believe, remember, I do think I remember a dues bill.
It was kind of like a generic letter to those counties who had not paid the dues for the Human Services Board, just a reminder kind of thing, and we've, I've never gotten one before, so-
Okay, I'll look into that.
Yeah, make sure the dues are paid, because we did allocate money for those dues-
Correct.
-because it was contingent on the state.
Mm-hmm. So, expenditure-wise, we are at 8.58% of our budget through the first month, and last year at this time, we were at 7.51, so we're up about a percent, but that's mostly due to that third payroll.
I want to give a bit of an explanation on that for those of you who are in the audience, and if you attend many of our meetings, and you hear this financial report at the second meeting of the month, the first meeting of the month, the finance meeting, you're gonna hear, "Our revenues are down, our expenditures are up, our revenues are down, our expenditures are up," and then we always look at history of prior years, and we're staying pretty consistent. It will get a little scary about July or August, because our revenues will be here and our expenditures will be here, but that's typical cash flow for us from the timing of our tax revenue, and that, by the end of the year, that will equal out, so don't get alarmed when you see this. Right. Because we're used to it, and it's just cash flow.
It's manageable, yes.
Any questions for Carrie?
Any questions on the expenses?
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay.
Anything else in your report?
I did have a couple of follow-up items that I wanted to address that came to light at the last meeting. Oh, first of all, too, I wanted to say that in your consent package, you would normally get a cash report for January, but since we're still manipulating accounts for the audit-
Good way to put it.
We're still adjusting.
That's a little better.
We are still moving monies back and forth between funds that, you know, owed money or didn't owe, or were owed money, so I didn't want to provide that, because it's gonna change as soon as those audit entries gets posted, so-
Yeah, that's good.
That'll come, and I didn't want a bad report floating out there, or an inaccurate report floating out there. And then, at the last commissioners' meeting, I was asked to provide a cost comparison for the elected officials that went out around the time W-2s went out, rather than provide the individual reports, I just provided the summary spreadsheet that I used to compile those reports, each of you should've received that, I'm not sure if anybody has any questions on that. The, there was another question asked of me during public comment about the county's master plan, and we paid two thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents to outside vendors for the work on the master plan. We do not do time studies unless a grant requires it, and since this was not a grant-required project- project, we did not have a daily time study done on how much staff time we spent on that, so that information is not necessarily available.
Carrie, do you have any idea what the cost was when we, in the past, we passed, I think probably 1998, 2000, or whatever, when we had NEMCOG do our master plan? What was the cost for that, you remember?
I wasn't here back then, but I do believe it was in the tens of thousands.
Yes. So, by doing it in-house, and we feel, we feel we're trying to do a better job with it, that's the difference in cost, so.
Right. And then, the county treasurer brought up an issue with the hard drives. I did receive a letter from Ron Williams that was addressed to the IT department rather than the board, but I think our best option is to just acquire the hard drives of all copiers that are used in our county building, so I think we're going to work on making that an IT policy, that when we trade in a copy machine, that the hard drive is provided to us, and we'll destroy it in-house, so that we know that the information cannot be taken anywhere else.
And we should add that as a component to our policy so that our risk insurance carrier would know that we are conscious about, conscious about that and are mitigating it.
Okay. I did talk with Ron about, is there a cost related to that? Because obviously, then he has to put a new hard drive in that unit if it's going to be resold again, and he said that the cost is usually around $100, but based on our level of, you know, business with them, he would just waive those costs because it's nominal, to keep the business. And then, the last item on there had to do with our current group life insurance policies. Our current group life policies cover different individuals at different levels. Elected officials have $25,000 worth of coverage, I believe department heads have $15,000 worth of coverage, and employees have $10,000 worth of coverage. After I got a little more involved in the benefit side of things, I found that there is an age reduction factor in our group life insurance policy. And when you turn 65, the policy value decreases to 50%. So, we, if we wanted to or needed to take anybody over the age of 65 back up to the original face value, we would have to buy voluntary life coverage, and that was a handout that I provided in your packets. The rates are based on ages, and you have to buy the insurance policies in increments of $10,000.
Carrie, could you touch on the requirement that once an elected official's benefit package, not just salary, is set before they are elected, that it cannot be decreased during the term of their office? Two-year or four-year term?
Can I defer that to him?
I'm going to do some research on that, whether there's a distinction between salary and other forms of compensation, I want to make sure of that, and I talked to Commissioner Redmond about that, and I'm going to be getting him a memo on that issue.
And I believe you've got one for us a while back, in that it's different, there's a difference between commissioners and electeds.
I think that may be true, but my memory may not be as good as yours. I want to go look and see what I had.
Yeah, so we need to be careful that we're not decreasing anything illegally.
That's correct. So I do have the information, I'll work with Brian and Jeff and find out where we have to go from here, if we're going to have to, you know, if we do have to secure additional coverages in order to take care of the age reduction, then I will have to bring forward a budget adjustment on that.
And if we're tied into this because of the legality of not being able to change anything during elected's term, because that's a board appointments and procedures issue that they will be addressing again before this next election. But I do have to say, again, this is a history thing for me, is that the commissioners never in the past, distant past, got life insurances, a benefit to their package. And when Mr. Overton was here, he was doing changes to policies and coming up with a cost-effective policies, the same amount for the other electeds, but cost-effective. And I remember him saying, we can add all the commissioners to this for, you know, a certain amount, for $100 total, and he said, I think we need to do this because this is really, this is really a good deal, to be able to get life insurance, tack them on for life insurance. Probably in all my files, I have where he told me that, but I don't know where that is for sure. And so I'm thinking, okay, $100 to tack on the commissioners, that's a no-brainer, it's, you know, it's a real inexpensive benefit, but when I'm looking at this, that is not what happened.
Yeah, that is not the case.
And I don't know whether it was, you know, he misunderstood it, or whether the insurance changed, or the policy carrier changed, I don't know what happened.
Our policy carrier hasn't changed. I guess I would have to say that maybe he misunderstood, maybe he, they, maybe he thought they were talking annual premium and they were talking monthly premium, or?
Yeah, because, because if it had that been known, then we wouldn't have done it. They wouldn't have added that.
That's an industry standard, when the ages change at certain levels, then the benefits drop. As people get older, that's an industry standard there, so that probably wasn't understood at the time.
Yeah.
So we'll provide that information for the board to review coming up to the next election cycle.
Okay, great. So what, do you need anything from us on this, Carrie? Okay, Tony, I'll get to you in a second, too.
I'm just going to wait to hear from Brian as to whether there's a legality of what level of coverage we have to have, and then obviously.
You'll have to come back to us for a budget adjustment.
I'll come back.
Commissioner Matowski?
Well, in this, in Carrie's report here, in order to bring everybody up to the $25,000, it would cost another $7,700, and I'm certainly not in favor of that, and I think we need to look into eliminating Jewishner's life insurance for the next year. That's way too much money to spend for.
Well, that's where the concern is, is that Brian needs to do the research, is, can we legally do that? I wouldn't have a problem with that either, but we're not so sure we can legally do that because once that benefitous package is set before the election, we can lower it, no, we can increase it, but we cannot lower it, so we're stuck.
I think that just involves salary, I don't think this would be a fringe benefit.
That's the research that I wanted to.
But I, I.
Yeah, I'm willing to wait till Brian.
Okay, but I want you to be prepared, there's a difference between how it's set for electeds and for commissioners. Some it's defined as salary, and some it's clearly defined as benefit cap, compensation package. And the opinion on that one wasn't from Brian, actually, it was from Peter Cole. There is a potential issue there, so we'll have that all determined, and then Carrie will come back with a proposal for us, and Brian will have an opinion on it for us. Hey, anything else, Carrie?
Um, no, I think that's it.
Administrator?
Just a couple of quick updates with our webpage development. Our web developer is nearing completion of our design. We're hoping by the end of the month to actually have the departments be able to go in and enter information. We have several departments with District Court, Sheriff's Department, Prosecutor, ready to enter information, so we're hoping to have that done by end of the month here. And also, community development is working on our home improvement loan program with the state to complete a plan. The plan would do a review of our area so we could have some input from the community on where we would focus funds in the future. If there's any other questions on that, I'd be happy to answer that.
Any questions for the Administrator, Christian Matowski?
Are you talking here about these funds will be used for place-making, and they will go to different areas in the community? Do we have areas in the community that these funds would be designated for? The way I understand place-making, from when we went through that whole thing with the planning commission, is you try to design an area to lure the type of people you want to come in and live in that area, and are we still using that definition for place-making here? Is that what this is?
That could be an element. This is a requirement from the state, the state is basing their grants basically on what they call place-making, so this would be not only transportation funds, but in our case, housing fund. An element of that is creating a centralized core where people would live and create basically that sense of place. So there's a whole lot of elements to sense of place or place-making.
So how much money are we talking about?
This is only for our housing, home improvement program, so I believe we had, what, about $165,000 that's allocated. Right now, our program is open. When this plan is completed, it will be focused on particular areas. Now, when we do the review, this area looks like it'll be very consistent to where we already do loans, primarily it's the city of Sheboygan, Wolverine, so the third area in the county will have to identify, will be based on statistics, and also working with probably a township unit to identify that.
Income statistics?
Yeah, income, housing costs, primarily the two areas in the county that are identified right now are the city of Sheboygan statistically and Village of Wolverine.
So, you know, the way we had this place-making explained was, it was supposed to be to get a certain type of person to move into an area to help the area expand itself. It sounds to me like these funds will be used to fix up poor people's houses, why are they calling it place-making? Are we making a place for poor people now, or is that?
I wouldn't define it that way, that's just the label the state placed on it. That's what the governor's initiative has identified. Further investments with grants, they generally call.
Daryl, hey, I promised not to talk about you.
Oh, yeah.
So they generally call it, generally, place-making. With this particular program, we'll have a, some background information that'll come with the report. This is just an early heads-up that the staff has to participate with the state with it, and the slideshow that would come with it will give a better explanation.
So this, this place-making, this came from the governor's office, right? Maybe we ought to send the governor a letter, tell him to get a hold of the planning guys that, from Michigan State, that came up here and explained place-making to us, maybe they could explain place-making to him so he more understands it a little better than, you know, the stuff that we get, and I.
Yeah. In our housing context, I would explain that they're looking at the investments to go in more areas with denser population, primarily because that's usually where we see more low to moderate income, more need for the housing. I think the state feels in their review that by investing in that area, that would lead to other investments in a core area. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know, but that's the way the state is interpreting things right now.
Done?
I just think, using the term place-making.
Christian Gobler?
Thank you. I just wonder, when it, this new prioritization, when will it begin? You have a deadline for having concluded, but for the home loans that you will make after that, based on the new priorities, when?
After July of this year, the loans, our primary loans would be based on that plan.
Okay, after July.
Yeah. We could use our funds that we collect from the payments in other areas of the county, but what we're finding statistically is most of our investment has traditionally happened in those two areas.
So you need to find a third area, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Walsh?
Madam Chair and Board, I think the reason we've only done it in those primaries because that's where it's mostly advertised, and I think we have to do a better job of making loans available. And I for one don't like the state telling me where we should spend our money to help people improve their homes. In Sheboygan County is unique, it is not like the metro areas or the suburbs of the metro areas. Sheboygan County is Sheboygan County, and I think the state is totally wrong in their evaluation of who is deserving and where these properties might be located.
Well, I think, and you hit on something when you say we're unique, and that the other larger areas are the ones that are going to be getting the money, actually. We're going to see, we already have seen our housing money decrease, and it's going to continue because when they're targeting areas and they're targeting transportation and dollars for housing to the populated areas, we're going to see ours decrease, and it's going downstate.
Yeah, we're rural, period, except for a couple of small.
There's not enough of us to worry about giving money to, but.
I think it's the wrong use of the word, like Tony does, of place-making, I just think it's inappropriate.
It's scary.
Yeah, we have talked to the state staff about that, they are hearing that in rural areas. With this particular round of money, the state initiative is to do more of a targeted effort, but their staff is aware that that doesn't always apply in more rural areas. Right now, we do have eight applicants under review, but we encourage anyone, if something's in the paper right now, to come forward if they need home improvement loan and they qualify, low to moderate income, they're encouraged right now to come forward, especially in the areas that may not be served here after July. We don't know if that'll happen for one cycle or two cycles, but at this point, that's the specific focus. So this kind of happens in different times with grant programs, sometimes they're generalized and other times they're specific.
I think it's wrong to put geographical areas onto where people live and should live based on their income or anything else, and I think that's, quite honestly, un-American.
Any other questions on housing projects, Jeff? Okay, do you want to take a quick break, or do you want to do a committee report first?
Take a break.
Ten-minute break, be back no later than quarter to.
Hey. It's only eight now.
Eight-minute break, eight-minute break.
Must be based on the.